In the meeting.
Passing it to my parents.
Thanks, Scott.
Like, they weren't in our company.
Look at that.
So, did you make your video?
I shut my video.
Okay. So, that video was talking?
Yes.
My grandma gets her birthday gift today. Yeah. So, I told her, I'll call you up for counsel.
To switch to here.
Okay. Oh, my gosh. Okay, we're so fancy.
You know.
Just so you know.
Yeah. The room is live.
The room is live.
In fact, I'm gonna join this call on my phone.
Okay, so Scott, I wanted to.
You can share your screen. Take a look at that.
But I'm not sharing my screen. Yes.
If you share your screen.
My screen is this one.
Your screen is this one.
Trying to round my mind around what's happening. Judge, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. I'm glad you're helping him, Rachel. All the help he can get.
We did Zoom court. Day before yesterday.
Yeah.
So, now you're sharing.
Oh, look at that. You are so good, Scott.
Oh, stop it.
Oh, my goodness. I think we're ready.
I'll call me the order. February 11th, town council meeting. Karen, then you do roll call, please.
Robert Jones.
I'm here.
Bruce Staggs.
Here.
Chuck Bab.
Here.
Shane Davis.
Here.
Steve Denny.
Here.
Only gold.
We do have a court. Let me back up here a minute. Let's take a minute here for side court. Thank you.
Please, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It will have approval of the minutes for the January 14th meeting. I wasn't have a chance to look at it. Any corrections or?
The only correction is, and he's here, so you can tell me for sure, but in the fourth, that's Edward Volente, should be Joel Entey. W O L E N T Y, I believe. Is that correct, Edward?
Yes, that's right. Thank you.
Any other corrections or additions? Falcon, I have a motion to approve the minutes for January 14th.
Second.
I have a motion in the second. Karen, I know you're trying to, you know, everything, but the roll call, please.
All right, Steve Denny.
Yes.
Shane Davis.
All right.
Chuck Bab.
Yes.
Bruce Staggs.
I, Robert Jones.
All right.
Minutes are approved. So, everybody knows it's not, Willie Paul's our court treasurer is under the weather, so Karen was trying to do. Recording and Willie's job, Willie's job is easy, as Arthur said, so.
All right, so it's me?
Yes.
All right, so the comfortable voucher up there for January. And the total claims were $2,169, or $2,016,954.42.
Any questions on treasurer's report? If not, I have a motion to approve the court treasurer's report. Sounds like it. We have a motion of second for court treasurer's report.
All right. Robert Jones.
Hi.
Bruce Staggs.
Hi.
Chuck Bab.
Yes.
Shane Davis.
Hi.
Steve Denny.
Yes.
Court treasurer's report. Department report.
Evening. As you can see, January was a busy month for the fire department. We responded a total of 51 times. There's just one under. Two times of what we had last year of 26. So, we started out with a bang for the month of January. So, and we haven't slowed down any for the month of February. So, with that, as you can see, we did a lot on EMS runs and accidents. Those are both of our responses. We did three station coverages. Anderson has been very busy over the last four or five months. And they've required assistances from the volunteer who's surrounding communities, the city of Anderson, to go take runs in their response area while they've been battling several house fires at one time and stuff. So, with that number of 51, you know, like I said, last year, January of 2020, we did 26. So, we're almost two times after this month. And, you know, we're on the trend to double for probably February, especially with the snow coming in and the weather and stuff that we're getting ready to. Hopefully, we won't see the interstate, but I have a feeling that we probably will be out there. So, any questions on the report that is submitted in front of you?
I'd just like to make a comment. This must report, Chief, I think, with Jimmy, has put some bar charts in there, which I like, if I almost say something about them. But what it does, it shows us comparing year to year. And it's, it's a good manager tool, good council tool, where you can just take a good close look at what he just talked about, the month February is going up, January was up. This shows it right in front of you, year to year. Not every month, but the trend is there where between fire department and EMS, the trend is going up monthly. And we just need to be aware of that.
Couple of things that I've been working on as well. The first thing, if you guys follow any of the social media, we have a person that's in charge of our social media account now. And she's been doing a phenomenal job on it. Some of the numbers are pretty astonishing for our small little community department. And, and what we get on it, obviously, a lot of things now with the trend of teenagers and everything is, is basically everything is brew balls around social media. So, you know, from checking your furnace filters all the way down to, hey, put some salt down, watch your step when you get out of the car, type of public service announcements that she's been sending out on all three social media platforms, Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. So, we've gotten a good amount of feedback from that, in which, you know, we're gonna keep going on that as well as we progress into the future. Another thing that I've been working on, I got Chief Moore here, like I told you in last month's meeting, that he says he's gonna step down and try to be a little fly on the wall here and there. But we've, we've communicated over the course that he wants to still be involved in the fire department real heavily. So, what he's gonna be tasked to do is, if you see him coming in your business, he's just gonna get information about your business. Who owns the building? Who owns the business? Any key numbers? If there's a not box, that way we can kind of get an idea of where we're at, because I have a feeling the businesses are gonna be booming here for long, not, you know, as well as the residential aspect of it. But we want to get an idea of who owns what building, if we have access to that building to get in in case of emergency, you know, during the normal hours as well as the after hours are the big things as well. So, Chief Moore's, you know, gracious enough to step up and do that. So, if you see him wandering in your business, excuse me, to get information and stuff, that's what he's doing, so we can compile that data, put it in the computer system at our station, which is interlinked to the county. So, that will transfer over to the police department as well. So, if they get dispatched to a downtown business, they have that access as well. So, it's kind of a two-way street here that we're doing stuff. So, any other questions?
I've got one comment.
Okay.
Okay. Chief Moore. All right. The first picture from the town. We've got a plaque there that we made for Chief. This Chief. This says, "Far Chief Jeff Moore, given by the citizens of the town of Pelton, Indiana, in appreciation for your years of service as chief of the Pelton Fire Department. Your leadership and delicate commitment to public safety has made this a safer place to live. We shall always be grateful to you in 2021."
Thank you.
And I'll thank you. And that's my report. Thank you. You're right for sitting around, Chief.
Chris won't let me.
I won't let him go anymore.
It takes two chiefs at the fire department.
That's right. You'll figure that out when we.
Judge play the game as well. Pelton Police Department monthly reports, total calls for the month are dispatched runs 511. The adult arrests are a little high. We have 34 criminal adult arrests, zero juvenile. So, the cold's keeping the kids in. And then, we too are working on our Facebook presence. Lucas Taylor and I monitor it, press releases, answer people's questions in the community, post-safety tips, et cetera. We're up to 6,582 followers now. We're 4.6 rated on a five star. So, anytime we can get as close to five, we're happy. So, the only other thing was simply, Rollins House invited me for a balloon launch to remember those that passed away due to COVID. And that was a great thing, the staff came out, the residents were able to watch through the windows. It was a good little event. And that is it.
Any questions or comments for Chief? Hold on, Chief, sir. Thank you.
If we don't get snowed in, we're gonna start court again, but it's gonna be on a, I wanna call a cross-platform. We're gonna have some physical presence in court, but we're also gonna be doing Zoom for a group of people, too. So, with our intact help, we think it's gonna work well. We've had one dry run already, gonna try it again next week to make sure it works out the way that we like to see it. Nothing more to add besides what you see in my report?
Any questions or comments for the judge?
I'm sorry, back that up again. I can't, I'm looking at right now and thinking. Keep going. Up to the top. That may not be the right one, 'cause it says December. That stuff to current, anyway, you still have a current report coming. I'm not, what happened?
Any questions or comments for judge? Thanks, Judge. Mark, Karen.
Good evening. Nothing really to add outside of what's in the report in front of you. The one thing I will just remind you all of, in case you didn't know, that at the January Park Board meeting, the board approved memberships for town employees and council members. So, if you'd like to take advantage of that, it holds myself or Scott Davis, I think, of course, and we'll get you signed up.
Thank you.
Anything else? Any questions?
On the image I think last month on approval.
Yes.
What did there ever, what's your, were they still working on that?
Yes, they're still working there, busy over in Ohio right now. So, they're a few weeks behind, but they are still coming.
Good, okay.
Yep.
Thank you. I gotta ask, making stuff fair, put you in this position, but of course. Did anyone contact you from a tree, like a lumber guy, that's warning you to cut down trees and clear out?
I have not heard from anyone.
Give him your name and phone number.
Okay.
Maybe he can talk to you. Then you probably have to hit with the board, but.
Yeah.
He's giving me the sales pitch, and I kinda cut him off and just told him he'd talk to you guys.
Yeah, kind of give me a call and we'll be happy to talk to him.
I'll look back up, just give a number.
Okay, perfect.
Town manager report.
Yeah, I don't have much in the town manager report, because most of what I needed to talk about in the town manager report is actually gonna be new business. So, I would like to thank the guys. Lucky Department continues to work out this cold with the new developments. Street has been doing wonderful with the snow and ice removal. And also, with the water department helping out on that. And then, they helped each other out, too, when the water department had a water main break on State Street. As you can imagine, there was a lot of traffic control issues with that. We even got our building inspector out there to help with the traffic control. Today, it's, the snow removal's been a little tricky, because the temperature's been so low, you have to be careful on the low-speed roads. If we plow them, we may be causing the snow to actually melt. And then, it freezes really hard at night and it's black eyes. So, the guys have been really good, especially Ricky, making the decision when to plow on some low, like subdivision roads where the travel line's low, the speed is low, versus how we handle the high-volume streets, where we just try and get everything off of it, salt it. I gotta thank the parks department. We got, thanks, well, first, police department, they've been, they called us out a couple of times in, in the early morning. And we were able to get ahead of it. Had we waited till, you know, five or six, when we normally wake up, we would've had a lot of troubles. So, I appreciate that. And then, the parks department came out. When they got done with the park, we asked Donnie to come help us, because the, we had the two dump trucks go down this morning. And one truck, it's a snow plow, they have a snow plow mounted on it, was being repaired. So, we were down to hardly anything. This is a four in the morning, five in the morning, we're trying to get out there before the rush hour. And so, we called up Donnie and said, we need your, when you get done with the park, we need your help. And they were, they rushed right out there with that little pickup truck they got. Helped out, so I appreciate that. That's it. Questions?
Any questions for town meeting?
Hey, thank you.
Run on in the new business. First one is ordinance 20-01, admitted ordinance 20-14-3 for stormwater management. Scott.
So, this is our ordinance that replaces our old stormwater ordinance. It's how we're, it talks about how we're gonna collect the stormwater fee, how we calculate it, what the stormwater fee is gonna be, a little bit about operations. We ran this through the stormwater board per council. This makes, the way we did it makes us eligible to, for bonding. And so, there was a resolution passed for the stormwater fee by the stormwater board. And then, this ordinance council helped me out, right? One, one reading, or do we have two readings? Two readings, okay. And then, so this is the first reading tonight. I do know that we have Baker Tilly online, I see them up on the board, so. Greetings. Greetings. Thanks, John. And so, they did the analysis, the financial analysis. I would say probably the, if you turn to the paperwork that looks like this. Go to page. Five. You look at different alternatives, they picked a couple of snapshots. The one that's in this ordinance is number three. Had we gone any lower, we would not have had any money to bond. All we could do was keep doing spot maintenance and spot repairs. And we would probably never, ever get ahead of what the situation that we're under, which is almost every major storm line in the town has collapsed over the years. And some of them require some major reconstruction. So, with that, open up for questions.
Sure anybody online residents got questions about this? Or council?
I don't think so.
We, we got a definite timeline to get things done on stormwater, to get it to a certain point where we need to get, so that's what you're putting.
Right, so that we can have it on the first property tax bill this year.
Right.
And it'll be a pro-rated truncated amount for the first bill, because we're already, you know, two months into the year.
Any questions here from the council? This is, this is a big move on the town's part that really needs to be done. Stormwater board, excuse me, Bob, but stormwater board has really put some hard time on this, and so does Scott and Coach Jim Cook. And there's a definite plan of which way we're gonna go, where we're gonna start at, what's after that, that Scott and I think Baker Tilly helped come up with this, but there's a definite timeline to get all this done. So, go ahead, I'm sorry about that.
I'm sorry. Have we any calls for the office of the public or any businesses?
And when we had the hearing, the public hearing, the second, if I remember right, we had one person that came in and asked a question, this technical question, how things were calculated, she was happy with that, and then left before we even started. And then, there was nobody online. Yeah, I think that reminded me that we did do a public meeting where people came in, talked about their problems, that was part of the engineering study. We had a lot of people come in in person, and we had a lot of people respond online. And the engineering firm, Banning, our engineering firm, used that to identify the projects that we need to get things going.
Public recognizes the need, we have, he was a Scott, you know, that's serious problems here throughout the town, we need to address. Probably nothing more expensive than stormwater repairs and invasion than. Hat. Fix the asphalt, you know, a lot of repair will get right up here. So, I think they recognize this, more of an inexpensive project, and they need, so appreciate you taking the time for this.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
The thing about Scott's pre-first day, I'll put that, back in July.
That right? Yeah, July first was the official first day.
Yeah. And Scott was already working at Cognita with us, and that's when we had all the storms and water and people out in the streets and everything, you know. As bad as it was, it was really a good thing to get everybody to understand something that's not been well taken care of, I guess, is the best way to put it, over the years. And I don't, Scott gets started hearing me say this, we can't do everything now. So, he's come up with a definite progression of how we're gonna go through it and the money wise of it. So, it's good. Stormwater board's doing great. Baker Tilly's doing great with us. Scott's doing good. A lot of hard work on this, so.
Yes. Regarding the timeline, there might be a lot of people who especially work in the town or on the board that understand it. But is there a way we could get a generic or basic timeline on our town web pages?
Oh, yeah, okay.
So, so people could just, they might have a question, maybe it might save a phone call in, if they could just see, this is what's happening when, how much this is gonna be cost on my bill, something in that nature, maybe do that.
That's good. If you have, top your head, if you know what, that's fine. Timeline, approximately, for you, just like, I don't wanna put you on the spot, so I Timeline approximately for you, just wait, I don't want to touch it on the spot, so.
So, well, so as far as collecting, you know, we're gonna collect through the property tax, so. First one, the property tax bill comes out at May, May, June? Council? May, May, June? Just wanted to cover that. Turn it for the audience. And then. So that'll be a truncated amount, but we're moving forward as far as projects, because we can't wait, you know, it's gonna rain when it wants to rain, I don't care. Nature doesn't care we don't have money to fix this, but, so we're starting with water street and we're using electric funds. Then we'll roll into Franklin Street. Franklin Street and then also the line that comes out of Franklin. Down into State Street. That gets replaced. And then the next project after that, and as we go through those projects, they're prioritized. So as we get community crossing grants or bids come in low, then we just roll to the next project. And we'll talk about water street in a second because the bids came in, in our favor. So their design, that as we go into it, we may find that we don't have to do full reconstruction, we only need to do partial reconstruction or just some show repairs. But we won't know it until we really get the engineering firm in there, so they're just prioritizing, as money's left over, we just roll to the next project. So. The first two, you will see water street, Franklin Street, start. This construction.
Somebody, let me just. Okay. Scott said that the project started out, we're gonna use electricity. That's, that's part of the appropriation that we made back in November, if I remember right. And that's a loan from the electric department to storm water. So we've got five years to pay that back, right? So, just, just information, we're not pulling money just to pull money. Look everything we're supposed to, wait, wait, right?
If I'm, if I'm correct, that saves us from having to get a bond, right?
Right, so because we had that option, we don't have to go to a bond and maybe if we, between community crossing grants and other grants, we may get lucky and. And never have to resort to a bond.
Just let us get started without a bond. Good question.
Can we utilize some funds from the, the loan approved company or two and we see all the car stations that.
Yes.
Will let into the new bond, restructure.
Right.
Last I checked, I think it was, we should make a box.
Yeah, I think we're at eight hundred Karen, we're at eight hundred thousand. Karen on that the other day. So that's our backup, all those, there's some other things coming down. Sixty seven, thirty six, reconstruction by a dot. Playing that, you know. Get a nice salt bar. So hopefully we don't have to tap into that too much. It's there, so far we've been lucky.
We can mention everybody, we can avoid bonding, 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 expensive setup, sorry for that, so we can avoid that, right?
Any other questions or comments? If not, can I have a motion to approve ordinance twenty one dash oh one, admitting that ordinance twenty fourteen. Dash three for storm water management.
I'll make a motion that we admit. Twenty fourteen dash oh one. Actually, dash oh three, I'm sorry, go wrong, dash oh three, yeah.
A second. Okay, we have a motion for a second.
Mark Jones.
Hi.
Marissa Stacks.
Hi.
Check back.
Yes.
Shane Davis.
Hi.
Steven.
Yes.
Motion's carried.
Now.
Like a motion to, for unanimous consent to suspend the rules to pass ordinance twenty one dash oh one, the state has benefits.
Make a motion to.
For unanimous consent.
Unanimous consent to, in the second reading.
A second that.
Robert Jones.
Hi.
Marissa Stacks.
Hi.
Check back.
Yes.
Shane Davis.
Hi.
Steven.
Yes.
So now I need a motion to approve. Ordinance twenty one dash oh one, for a second reading. So moved.
Okay.
Sorry, there's, I will ask you to take your time, that's okay.
Steve Danny.
Yes.
Shane Davis.
Hi.
Check back.
Yes.
Marissa Stacks.
Hi.
Robert Jones.
Hi.
Motion's carried and. First and second reading, so that looks, that's cool, yes, with our timeline that I was talking about. Still gets to strike. Have questions?
Can you finish up on that? I just want to say thanks to everybody involved in that, that's, that was an easy task to do. And it's a task that just beat it and it's not fun for anybody to do it, but I really appreciate all the work.
I second that, there goes a lot of time and a lot of effort put into that by a lot of people to get to this point right here in the morning. Okay, next, on new business ordinance, twenty ones I showed two, ordinance for additional stop signs. Okay, I don't know if everybody's had a chance, you should have, had a chance to read all of this on twenty one dash oh two.
This is mostly up there at Pendle Point, because the, perhaps roads get completed. Now have three-way intersections mostly that need to, and then a decision was made because traffic is, count is going up because of. Pendle Point that we need a stop sign for northbound traffic on Pendleton Avenue before they either go into Pendle Point or turn right on to get on sixty seven.
Another, another thing they did, I gotta say this, if, if you're going north on Pendleton Avenue, you come up to that, used to be a yield sign. Across the street in what I'm gonna call the Commons area, there was two. Big arrows tell you to turn. But the second arrow, you was about seventy-five feet into the, past the intersection where you'd actually turn. Into the Commons area. And Scott thought, well, I'll take that out there, so we took that out.
And the other, probably other one that would be unique is, so that can be enforced, the portable stop sign that's put out by the elementary school. On, on school days.
Who controls that, I gotta ask, the school puts it out.
Unless you're guys, did one of you guys? No, 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 I took it out the other day, I had a talk with Mr. Schill and told him how we don't let anybody else in town that's erect a stop sign in the middle of the road, so. We took it off the road, he uses it when they have the crosswalk going. But, but it isn't, it isn't enforceable or anything, except for now that we have disorderments, it could be, but. I guess the question on the street right now is, is it something they're gonna leave in the crosswalk or is it something they're gonna remove?
My question, who's gonna, who's gonna put it in there, who's gonna take it out if they're not using the crosswalk?
Now, he's never expressed that that's gonna happen. It's, that's, it's portable, taking it off. But they, if they wanted to change, then that's a whole different, permanent discussion. The only, the only question I would have, and again, street signs are above my pay grade, but. Does it meet standards of a stop sign, is it size-wise, is it visibility, I don't know, it's just on a roller cart and they put it out there. They cross kids, I mean technically if you have a crossing guard and a, and a pedestrian walkway and someone flies through there. Then it would be some type of violation or God forbid a kid were to be hit. I just, I don't know the rules on this stop sign.
Okay, I'm gonna throw another curve at you then. Listen to the chief talk. The other place that I know where we got portable stop signs is at Needlers and the Mexican Restaurant Road in front. Sometimes they're out there, sometimes they're off. So that's reasonable, I asked a question, yes?
The ones at Needlers, those are on private property though, we don't regulate any of the roads that are in that parking lot. So they're not even stop signs that we would be enforcing because they're, it's not a city, it's not a town road.
We don't enforce those stop signs as far as writing a ticket or anything like that for someone driving past them.
The portable one on East Street is in our street right of way, so that makes it a different beast than the Needlers stop signs.
Okay, let me ask this question this way, are you okay with, you okay with it? Chief, you're the one stuck.
If the attorney likes it, then I like it, I don't know anything about the rules of the stop sign, the size of the.
Based on what the chief has brought up, I've asked that that portion be omitted from the ordinance. And we could bring that back the next month, though I did a little research on size, he brought a couple things I didn't think of, I put this together. Okay, so I'd like to, if you could, we could simply omit that portion of the ordinance if you like, that'd be my recommendation.
Okay, that's what we'll do. Those are in, so we can do, put this in.
Rachel, were we at one point talking about, kind of, what you call it? There in the asphalt, the street, slow driving.
Oh, yeah, elevated crosswalk.
Yeah.
Yeah, they talked to us about that and so. I'm, I'm moving forward on it and we'll start to put things in place, we won't touch it until school's out for the summer. But we're gonna start moving forward on it.
Let me get your range very right there, that, we're rushing this now.
What I met with Mr. Schill the other day, when we were talking about the crosswalk. Something that jumped out at us and it, it comes to, having driven this town for twenty-five years, like it's never been an issue, but when we looked at it, we're looking at the crosswalk. We're looking at his little stop sign. None of the roads exiting out onto East Street have a stop sign. So, except for Donnie Meyer's house, there's one on hold. But all the other ones, there's no stop sign, and then if you drive down State Street. There's some alleys exiting out and I don't know, I just don't know the rule on that, I don't know if you don't have to have a stop sign on an alley exits out onto the street or, or what, but. Mr. Schill and I noticed that standing out there talking about the crosswalk, but, oh my gosh, somebody could just legally come right out of those alleys and just come out on the east, so.
We, we will research that.
Correct? Yeah, that's true, okay. Yeah.
You're gonna have to next one with this also.
Yeah, it was likely, I would be inclined to put it on the alley because it's at the school, go ahead and put those in.
Okay, on this ordinance twenty one dash oh four. Yeah, on here, Scott.
Oh, four.
It's actually oh two.
Yes.
With the. The leak from the part about the crosswalk that Jeff talked about, can I have a motion to approve this, please?
I'll make a motion.
Say. Motion in a second to approve twenty one, ordinance twenty one dash oh two.
Robert Jones.
Hi.
Marissa Stacks.
Hi.
Check back.
Yes.
Shane Davis.
Hi.
Steven.
Yes.
Okay, on this one, I'm gonna have the same thing. I'll spin the rules so we can get these. Come to. Okay, get the ordinance enforced.
Make a motion, Rachel, spend the rules.
Have a motion in a second to spin the rules. Demand a decision.
Robert Jones.
Hi.
Marissa Stacks.
Hi.
Check back.
Yes.
Shane Davis.
Hi.
Steve Danny.
Yes.
Motion's carried. Now I need a motion to approve second reading on this twenty one dash oh two, traditional stop signs.
So moved to second reading.
Second.
I have a motion. And a second. I'm trying to talk to him.
Robert Jones.
Hi.
Marissa Stacks.
Hi.
Check back.
Yes.
Shane Davis.
Hi.
Steve Danny.
Hi.
Good motion's carried. Ordinance twenty one dash oh two for a second reading, thank you. Take a break, Karen, okay? Ordinance twenty one, next, new business, ordinance twenty one dash oh three, access management and control ordinance. Who's talking, you or, okay?
This ordinance, we've been working on it in the planning department for a little while now, we have. We've been working on it with our thoroughfare plan updates. I have Mass and County Council of Governments here tonight, Ryan is here, that will help walk us through what this ordinance is and help answer any questions for us. We did pass this, or take this ordinance to the Plan Commission and the Plan Commission has reviewed it over a couple of months now, they had a, we presented it, they had a month to digest it. They came back in February and they were comfortable with, saying that they were comfortable with this one, so they're passing it up to you guys to take a look at now. Tonight would just of course be the first reading, we're not looking for a second reading being done tonight, we think. If there's members of the community that want to digest it as well, that we should give them ample time to take a look at this and send back any feedback that they may have. So with that, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Ryan and he can kind of give an overview of what the ordinance is and we can go from there.
Good evening, can everyone hear me all right?
Oh, sorry, Brandon, I didn't even see you on there yet, so, sorry. Brandon is also from Council of Governments that will help present this, so.
Yeah, so Ryan Pulp's the principal transportation planner for the county council of governments. Brandon is actually gonna do most of the talking, I'm here for Hugh and Aggie, he's the project manager for the thoroughfare plan within our agency and he's been leading the development of the ordinance.
Yeah, thank you Ryan, thank you Rachel, I'm with the Mass and County Council of Governments, my name's Brandon Candera, I'm the project manager for the Pendleton Thoroughfare Plan. Briefly what Rachel just said, but what I'm asking from you all tonight is just to listen as I provide a brief introduction about the access management and control ordinance for the first reading. This ordinance did receive a favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission earlier this month. We will be back next month to answer any of your questions, comments or concerns before you all hopefully adopt the ordinance. Please keep in mind that this ordinance was drafted using the NDOT Access Management Guide. This guide was developed by NDOT to help cities and towns establish their own access guidelines to limit access onto NDOT and town-owned roadways. We work closely with NDOT and NDOT really wants to avoid roads like Scatterfield, for example, in Anderson, in the future. Similar access control ordinances have been adopted statewide. One, the first important note, this ordinance improves the overall safety of a corridor greatly by carefully inspecting access to land adjacent to the roadway. Another important note is how the access management ordinance interacts with the town site design review process. The planning director or the Plan Commission can grant exceptions, variances or other changes to the ordinance when going through the site design review process. And it is good to have this type of flexibility in the ordinance. The access management control ordinance establishes minimum regulations for access to property from road rights of way. The intent of the ordinance is to provide and manage access to land as it develops while preserving the regional flow of traffic in terms of safety, capacity and mobility. The standards in this ordinance apply to private and public land along road rights of way that are under the jurisdiction of the town of Pendleton or NDOT. Dependent on the size of a new development, a traffic impact study may be required. And this can help decision makers like the Plan Commission or town staff to determine what access is appropriate for that development. The access management and control ordinance references the Thoroughfare Plan map to determine what access control will be applied to different functionally classified roadways. Simply put, functionally classified roadways are how we classify roads from interstate arterial collector all the way down to a local road. Application of the access location and design standards of the ordinance, ordinance requires identification of the functional classification of the street on which access is requested. Essentially, access control along arterial roadways and state routes will be when the ordinance is most useful. I know this is a very large ordinance and there are a lot of moving parts, but the, the Rachel and Kayla have been great to work with and our staff had the opportunity to test this ordinance with the proposed development in Pendleton last year. From this process, we learned a lot and we made changes to address some of the shortcomings of the ordinance. Uh, I could provide more information and keep on going on uh, and provide an overview of the nine sections within the ordinance, or I can open it up to questions now. Uh, I'll leave that to you all on Town Council.
Brandon, I gotta ask, if I'm, and I've read through this, but if, if I'm a farmer in the town, I'm sorry, if I'm a farmer and own a fifty acre field out here, will that affect my access to the land?
We got a similar question come up during the Plan Commission meeting, and no, it will not. Uh, depending on how big your property or parcel is, you're granted more essentially access points, the bigger that the property is, so no, it will not impact the farmer's access to their property. Um, and currently, all access points now are grant, are basically non-conforming driveways under this ordinance. Um, so all existing access points stand.
You know, a question from the council.
Been, uh, working with NDOT on this, so you're probably seeing some similarity of this ordinance and other jurisdictions, am I correct, in the counties?
Yeah, yeah, there's, um, this.
It's not, it's not unique to us.
No, the NDOT manual came out in two thousand thirteen and slowly been rolled out across, uh, across the state for any local jurisdictions to apply. Uh, also, we did the same or a very similar ordinance just down the road in Fortville two years ago, I believe, so they've had a chance to test it out a couple of times. We did learn a few things from that one as well, and obviously, we've, we've changed it to fit the Pendleton context a little bit, but um, one thing that Brandon didn't get a chance to mention yet is that the NDOT manual, while it provides a good template, it actually has multiple templates within it based off of the type of community that's being applied to. So, for example, Pendleton, uh, we used as a base um, a small town on the edge of uh, urban growth. Um, that, that's actually one of the options in there. It fits Pendleton really, really well. Um, so we did make some tweaks to fit the local conditions a little bit more, but it's nice that they have a lot of different options to work with to fit their local conditions.
Okay, but that being said, as time goes forward, if we do an office ordinance, do that, it would be something that you're seeing in other areas that would be amended or the course of time is areas grow, that it's pretty much, it would be, uh, remain written?
Yeah, it pretty much remains as written. The, the major time that it changes is when the thoroughfare plan updates. Um, cause there are references like Brandon, like Brandon noted this, that it references the functional classification identified within the thoroughfare plan, so the main thing is keeping your thoroughfare plan updated as you get grows, um, which you should be doing as a town anyway.
Sure.
Um, and then as that's updated, then the ordinance should reference it properly.
So then the government should be oriented.
Yep. Yeah, so it's really built to be, um, fairly long-lasting.
Yeah. Good, thank you.
Um, I'd like to note too that working through this process with council governments, um, as planning staff, we've really been able to work closely now within that to understand our role and when we do, when the, when the town does allow cuts on a road. You know, we have a lot of state highways and um, that come through Pendleton. So, you know, our, our former, our past understanding was that NDOT, NDOT had jurisdiction on when those cuts could or cannot happen on their facilities. But working through this project, we've learned that, and we've come to this agreement with NDOT that the town can really say whether or not we would like a cut on the NDOT road, or that if we would allow a cut for a developer on an NDOT road. So we can make that decision here first, and then we can put it in and say, since the town is okay with this cut going here, will you guys now allow that cut from a technical, um, perspective? And so that's kind of that relationship, which I think is really a good fit for us to move forward. Because we kind of always thought it was the other way around, that if we're not permitted it, we're kind of at the helm of it, but that's not exactly the case. Um, so we're, that's been a really good win, uh, working through this ordinance. Um, the other thing is, this really gives staff some tools now that when we do have developers that come that may want to put a road cut where we don't want a road cut, um, we can now say we have this tool to back us up, whether, rather than it just being staff saying, we don't think this is appropriate for our community, we can say it's not appropriate for our community. Um, so those are two big things that are kind of my takeaways from having this ordinance together.
Thank you.
Yeah, you could watch it, depending on where it's far, you know, we're getting a lot of, a lot of growth in the area, but in the, in the South Madison County for that money. And it's important you have your dogs under a, you have this ready for development, that you can, you get your ordinances in, in position and you, that you're in control of what you do, not a developed coming in buying a hundred acres and they're gonna do what they're gonna do.
Yes, and the, you know, having driveway cuts based on, or getting permitting driveway cuts because from a technical engineering perspective, they work, that is completely different than planning a whole corridor in a, in a town. I mean, we look at State Route sixty-seven and we have many issues along State Road sixty-seven that if we keep permitting driveway cuts and road cuts along sixty-seven, we have a lot of messes to clean up later. But now we can be more proactive and say, no, we're not, we're not gonna put a cut here. You need to put your cut here instead where it makes more sense for us. So we don't have to be retroactive and make improvements, so.
This strikes me to be the work. This is part of the metrorium where we slow down and get our ordinances and so forth updated. This is probably one, bigger one to start now. This is what we need to do to get to the point where we're, we're in charge.
Yeah, yeah. We have a couple more. Um, we have another ordinance that will follow this one. Um, we still have some tweaks to do on, do on it. It's the right-of-way dictation ordinance. Uh, Plan Commission had some concerns with it, so we're doing a little more research before we bring that one to council. We want to make sure Plan Commission is comfortable with it before we bring it to you guys. Um, so this is kind of the start of, we're gonna be really busy with planning stuff in the next couple of months, so we can meet our deadlines for the moratorium.
All good things. Do you have a question, anything online question?
Nope.
Counsel, any questions? Could be the work.
I know you guys all read it before bedtime and
Can I have a motion for ordinance twenty-one dash oh three, access management control ordinance, for reading only, please.
So move.
Second. Have a motion of second, Karen.
All right, with Steve Denny.
Yes.
Shane David.
Hi.
Chet Baugh.
Yes.
Marissa Stank.
Hi.
Robert Jones.
Hi.
Ordinance twenty-one dash oh three to approve, first please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The piece of work.
Yep. Next new business is Water Street, they have recommendations, that's just command, Scott, that's you.
So, um, this is the first stormwater project, as we mentioned earlier, is that we're gonna be working on, and lucky the bid came in lower than what we estimated. The only thing bad about it is that many crossings for the construction, that's seventy-five percent paid for by, uh, NDOT, who put in twenty-five percent so that so the savings, we only get twenty-five cents on the dollar, where the bid is lower than they estimate, so in the end, it'll be right where we said it always would be, because there are always a few extra, I think, when it comes to this. So Water Street will be, uh, repaving, putting in sidewalks, basically from Pendleton Avenue to uh, East Street, and then pretty, most importantly, put in a new storm line that will pick up that flooding that happens anytime somebody cries in this town. Past three years, takes it and then, uh, turns right past the steeples of property, turns right into the park, and then takes it down, um, puts it in an existing line. It's, uh, between that house that's across museum, right along the railroad track that there, and then that turns down, uh, Falls Park Drive for about two hundred feet, then turn to right, dumps into the fall creek. So to do a lot of nice things, put in the curb cutter, and the sidewalks to five feet. The other thing is, we'll have, it's, it's new, we gotta sort of get used to this in the town, is that from now on, when I first, we put in the storm line, we're gonna run a ladder with the property line and so that people can hook up their sump pumps, gutters, and yard drains. So the old sanitary sewers that got ripped out two or three years ago, that we're doing all that for the last fifty years, they no longer exist, which is why we've got huge flooding problems. This is the last one. So, no fall, fall creek, they're falling better along. Um, so anyway, that's the project and, uh, worked out well, as far as the bid, and it's, uh, the contractor is um, DC Construction. Our engineering firm has dealt with them before. They are very happy that they were the lowest bid bidder. Uh, because every project they've worked on with them has been very good, and they also leave with the salmon that lives here in town. Nice little piece. Information will give a little piece of what, so. Any questions? Oh, yeah, there's a bid ladder there. Um, so the bid was four hundred sixty-six thousand six hundred and twenty dollars and ninety-seven cents. Should have a bid certification letter from the engineering firm. Just needed a motion to, uh, accept the bid as recommended by the town manager and our engineering firm.
I make a motion to approve the bid. Right, I have a motion in a second to approve the bid for BNK, is what you said.
DC Construction Services.
DC Services. Motion of second, Kurt.
Robert Jones.
Hi.
Marissa Stank.
Hi.
Chet Baugh.
Yes.
Shane David.
Hi.
Steve Denny.
Hi.
Oh, I forgot that. One more thing that we've done too is we added, uh, a sidewalk, because it will be in that area, sidewalk for the park that'll run six foot wide from approximately where that fire hydrant is to the mid-res. So it'll be a curve, curving sidewalk, and it'll be a nice little boundary, um, and that was part of the long-range plan, correct?
Did the parks pay for that?
No. Three crossings is paid for seventy-five cents.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Uh, I told the new business, I have no old business. So are there any questions online from anybody or comments? Anybody, any audits got a question, comment?
I have a couple things for the bid. Uh, I think we're gonna go from, Rachel, the two towns of the limits about the household, eleven fourteen. I don't think we got a chance to see that. Essentially, it passed through the committee that us both of this, the developer can buy a hundred acres somewhere, and rather than at the high elevation of the towns, that's by what kind of architectural design that you want to develop, provided it's correct, Rachel. Uh, the developer can pretty much do whatever they want to do, regardless of what the cost of the community are. I mean, that's, that's alarming, the way that's written. Takes away the control of the local, not just Pendleton, but any local planning commission, any local town. Uh, governments, uh, that's by what kind of architectural design will have for the, for the proposed development. Okay, that's probably the first one, please.
It spells it right out, it's house.
Well, call it house.
House bill, it should be eleven.
Eleven fourteen.
Yeah. To get online, like Bob's saying, and read it, it's amazing what this guy is trying to get done and.
And he's a developer.
Yes, I, I didn't want to say that, but he is a developer, yeah. I got online and looked up the author of this, and he is a developer, the company Elkheart owner business.
I personally think you violate house rule.
I do too.
It's a self-interest, immediate benefit which violates.
You can get online from what Rachel sent to us and you can find out who your legislator is if you don't know. I called both of ours and also called one of the state senators. That, that bill needs to be, not going to be committed.
I don't know, we in the town, can we take a position on that, Jeff, in the letter from, I said the town council? The boys are concerned about the, from the
Yes, the town council and actually vote to send a letter of, of opposition to the house bill, we can do that tonight.
I, I make a motion that we, we do that. Write the letter to the, who did that go to, to the?
Well, we can send it to our legislators, the legislators that govern the town, and they would have that, think that they would have to be the ones for sale. Only legislative one, that's what it's about.
With the email that I received, I think I all received from, I think from Jenny suggesting, like, to Rachel, that we hopefully, Rachel will write something up. In fact, we have filed their view for what the verdict should be in, in the statement, and then we.
All right, okay, that's what I'll say. Between Scott and Rachel, they for the motion, we'll give a secondary minute, write the letter up, get that done, and give it to the correct people, and let us know.
And I prefer it come from us as a town, or even the Plan Commission can put one together as well, because Jenny had mentioned possibly doing it as staff, which I don't mind either, but I think to say a staff member doesn't like it versus a governing body, I think that speaks more than, you know.
Just a motion of second, just like a normal, you are a it's a resolution that is, uh, in opposition to that house bill that Rachel sent us the information.
I'll second that.
And just a quick comment, cop question, with the letter, I think the town manager and the, uh, council president should go sign that. And probably maybe the planning director, I don't. Cause whoever. Or we're gonna, I think we're gonna tie the, the resolution. Okay.
Whatever. Have a motion or second to draft a letter on house bill eleven, one fourteen, or eleven fourteen. And I'll sign it and whatever resolution says, but just give force. Karen?
Robert Jones.
Hi.
Marissa Stank.
Hi.
Chet Baugh.
Yes.
Shane David.
Hi.
Steve Denny.
Yes.
I have motion, Karen, for NDOT and Rachel and Jeff, they'll, Jeff will get the resolution, so it's documented. Let's hit the letter and I'll sign it, okay?
I'll keep you guys.
This is Senate Bill, Senate Bill two eight, this is now a, that's a general meeting. This potentially is, uh, this is a right-of-way, the, uh, developer, the high of a hundred acres and, and the, right now, that would be like, someday up and build and divide the streets after you approve the plan, which about town. But this bill will change that to where they can buy that, they can lay it out, and the local community, local jurisdiction would have to, in that domain, acquire the road right-of-way. When I, interpretation of the bill, that's what I think, was actually construction of the street. If you acquire through that domain, that would leave an impression, it probably expect you to pay for the construction of the street as well. If you would, uh, be forced to this happen, uh, the, on the development, uh, the community would have to, in this domain, acquire the property right-of-way for the street belt in that subdivision. That's a concern as well.
And right now, our current ordinance, um, we do have a way for land like that. I mean, we did that with, um, Carrot Glen when they came in and did, went through their whole process. They did dedicate right-of-way on County Road six hundred to the town of Pendleton, so that when we go and do a future road expansion project, we already have that property to build on. Um, but like Bob is. Um, but like Bob is saying, this would prohibit that, where then we would have to go to Carrot, you know, to D R Horton or whomever. And go through eminent domain proceedings, or we would have to purchase it off of them. If we can't purchase it off of them, it would go to eminent domain, so that's a expense. You know, we have a, someone coming here wanting to build in Pendleton, um, but maybe then not contributing to our road network or the. The strains that they put on our community for developing here.
You can see, I have built, that is approved on for many local communities, and they were, I come up with funds to buy the purchase, the right of way for that, and also assume that you have the paper of the, uh, construction of the street. And, uh, that will appear, we have to fund that. Big, big change was proposed.
You have a comment or question? If not, means adjourned, thank you.